Get started, we'll get through our necessary scripts and whatnot, but this is Gary Trendle Chair of the Hockington Planning Board, and I hereby call our Plenty Board Meeting for June twenty first two thousand and twenty-two to order. Sorry, wrong script. Let's try the correct one. This open meeting of the Hockington Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with the previously signed and act extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted in the state of emergency. This act includes an extension of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty executive orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue providing live adequate alternative means of public access of the deliberations of the public body. Instead of holding meetings in a public place that is openly and visibly accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of the public body to continue participating in remote meetings remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by video conference via Zoom app as opposed to the town's web meeting calendar and the board's agenda, identifying how the public may join. Additionally, the meeting is being broadcast by H cam through multiple channels. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website through the web meeting calendar, unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. With regards to public comments, just a couple of quick reminders, not every agenda item will feature public comments. Although we're generally pretty open if people have questions or thoughts on the subject. For items with public comments after members have spoken, please raise your hands. You use the raise your hand feature on Zoom and begin with your name and address. You will be afforded three minutes for your questions and comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be connected by roll call. So in the spirit of roll call, we're gonna start with just confirming who is here. So members, when I say your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary?
And I was muted. Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Rob?
Rob's here.
Fran?
Brandon Young, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Ron?
Ron Freefer, yes.
And Elise?
Elise Mihailovski, here.
All right, and Stephanie, when I call your name, please respond to the affirmative. Mr. Gelsic?
John Gelsic, here.
Ms. Pemberton?
Tiffany Pemberton, here.
All right, so that gets us through that stuff. Appreciate everyone's patience. We had a joint meeting earlier with the select board to appoint our new member. And we wrapped that up and then just the minor logistical problems in getting into this call. From an agenda perspective, we have, we'll start with the center school presentation. Which I know I am excited to hear and update on. The, there are two hearings that we will need to continue. The one oh three, one oh nine South Street has asked for continuation as has Box Mill Road. So then we'll move to the Chamberlain Street, Senecro Road hearing, and then we'll go ahead and close out with meeting minutes that Stephanie had said down earlier. So let's actually start with, just to get this actually, just to get this out of the way, let's go ahead and all entertaining motion to open the public hearings for Chamberlain Street, one oh three, one oh nine South Street and Box Mill Road.
So moved.
Second, Ron Freefer.
All right, assuming no discussion, we'll take a vote on opening the hearings. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Fran?
Randy Young, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Ron?
Ron Freefer, yes.
Elise?
Elise Mihailovski, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes as well. And then let's just go ahead and continue those hearings now. So John, for one oh three, one oh nine South Street, they wanted to continue that to our next meeting. Which is July eighteenth. And when would we need to continue the decision to?
So the, it would just be for the stormwater management permit and we usually go like a week and a half after, so July twenty-fifth?
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to continue the hearings for one oh three, one oh nine South Street to July eighteenth. And to continue the decision for the stormwater management permit to July twenty-fifth.
So moved.
Second.
All right, assuming no further discussion, we'll vote on that continuance. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Fran?
Brandon Young, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Ron?
Ron Freefer, yes.
Elise?
Elise Mihailovski, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes. And then secondly, John, can we do we need to continue the decision as well for Box Mill?
No, Box, Box Mill is due August twenty-third, I believe.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to continue the hearing for Box Mill Road to July eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, we'll vote. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Rob? Rob?
Rob Benson, yes.
Fran?
Brandon Young, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Ron?
Ron Freefer, yes.
Elise?
Elise Mihailovski, yes.
And Gary Trendle is a yes. So thanks for your patience, everyone. And the good news is that when we do come back to meeting in person, that'll be a whole lot faster because we don't need to do everything by roll call. All right, so Mr. McIntyre.
Good evening.
We are excited to hear what you have to share with us on progress for the center school site.
All right, well, thank you. For the record, Dan McIntyre, Chair of the Permanent Building Committee. I see a couple other building committee members have called in Curtis Smithson and Rob Scott are also on the line. This is not a posted meeting for the PBC. So the three of us won't be able to deliberate, but they can certainly go back and forth with the planning board if, if need be. But I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to update you tonight and, and hopefully seek some input on the center school project going forward. We think the planning board is one of several boards whose involvement will be important to the success of this project. The others being the Board of Selectmen, who we updated two weeks ago. And the Historical Commission, who we will be meeting with next week. So I prepared a few slides that I'd like to take you through to give you some background and status of the project. And then we can open up for some discussions. Can everyone see that slide?
Yes. Yes, we can. Thank you.
So some of you may recall that the Board of, the Select Board created the Center School Reuse Advisory Committee a few years back. And they did a pretty comprehensive study. And their recommendation was that there's enough municipal needs in town that the center school property should remain a municipal asset. And that it should be studied to see what what the future uses of the property are going to be. And you can see some of the needs that were identified by the reuse committee. Affordable housing, youth and community center, more parking. Definitely municipal office space, easy overcrowding in Town Hall. More meeting space. Parks and Rec were a big need source. They currently use the gym down at the center school. Up until recently, the building is in such poor condition that facilities had to mothball it and just shut it down. So Parks and Rec are no longer using the gym down there now. And then also Record Stores was identified. The PBC contracted with Judy Barrett, Barrett Planning to assist in updating the needs list since it's been a couple of years. And Judy went through and confirmed all of these needs are still, still out there. The one, the one need that's not listed here that may or may not be suitable for center school is the school administration. They're currently leasing space up on Hayden Row Street. And I think their long-term plan is to get that administrative space into one of the school buildings. So they may not be part of center school project, but that's still yet to be determined. So this is the center school property. It's actually split into two parcels totaling about twelve acres. The parcel abutting the common on the left-hand side of the screen is where the center school building is. There's actually three wings there. The nineteen twenty-eight building that we're all familiar with that fronts on the common. Behind that, there is a wing that was constructed in the nineteen fifties. And then finally, in nineteen eighties, there was a third wing and gymnasium built. The rest of the property is essentially vacant. The second parcel of about five and a half acres is a separate isolated parcel. It's actually separated from the first parcel by a sliver of land owned by Eversource. Where they have some power lines going through there now. So the use of this property will be dependent on making some sort of an access agreement with Eversource to get to it. So we're not quite sure how that's gonna work yet, but we're sure our friends at Eversource will continue to work with us as they have in the past. So the standard way of doing things would be for the building committee to develop a concept plan that meets the identified needs, and that's what we've done here. We've actually developed six or seven different options. I'm only showing you one tonight that seems to be the favorite of the committee. What we did was we rehabbed the nineteen twenty-eight section into office spaces. Actually, three floors, one, two, three floors here. The nineteen fifties and nineteen eighty sections, they're in pretty poor condition. So we're recommending demolishing those. Building a new wing with some administrative space here, community center. Parks and Rec offices. And then as well as playing fields here, playing fields here. These fields could just as easily be a gymnasium if, if that was really needed. So we, we developed this concept. And I think the concern was that it's it's a big price tag. We're estimating in the fifteen to twenty million dollars to build out these community needs on this particular property. And in discussions with the town manager and the Select Board, they felt that that was quite a bit of money to put onto the taxpayers at this time. And they were looking for alternative ways to deliver this project. One of those ways is to consider this whole property as a kind of an an economic opportunity. So the property is really larger than we actually need for our current municipal needs. So there's an opportunity to, to go into a public-private partnership of some sort to be determined to help reduce our costs and offset our costs. It would be similar to what was done downtown with the parking agreement with Chuck Joseph, how we got some parking downtown. But on a much larger scale. We also think the location of this property right in the downtown area would be vital to support the downtown revitalization that's going on. And it could be a key anchor in the downtown and around the town common if we got some development in that area. So based on that, we issued a request for interest to area developers on what they thought they could do with this downtown property. And we received seven respondents from developers. And three of which submitted detailed letters of interest and what they could do there. And the dominant interest was multifamily housing in the, in the excess land area. And there was some limited interest in commercial development of the nineteen twenty-eight section. Perhaps a restaurant or some sort of coffee shop in that area. So we think based on those seven respondents, we think there's enough interest to issue to a detailed request for proposals to developers on what to do to the downtown in that downtown area. And that's why we're going around to different boards seeking input on what could go into that request for proposals. So this is one one concept that was submitted by a developer. This particular one focused on multifamily and assisted living housing. The nineteen twenty-eight section building would be rehabbed for town use. The rest of the property would be multifamily housing, age-restricted housing. And they even put some in this back parcel here as well to try to increase the density. Another option was to kind of split the land. Give this front area near the common, leave that under town ownership. Build some buildings in there to meet town needs. And the rest of the property into some sort of apartments or multifamily buildings. They all felt that housing was the the best use, highest and best use to get the best value to the town. They also felt that the density would have to be increased somewhat as well. These are all, you know, three, four-story buildings. In that, in an area that's zoned for residential right now. So tonight we're seeking input on several things. If we issue an RFI to developers, we need to give them some direction on what kind of zoning changes the town would be interested in making. For example, would we, would we agree to multifamily? Would we increase the height of the buildings? What kind of density might be acceptable to the town? We're thinking it might be similar to the neighborhood mixed-use zone that's currently allowed, I think, over on, on South Street. And, and how the town would want to approach these zoning changes? Would we make a zoning change for this, just this parcel? Formerly a town meeting? Or would we enter into a local initiative program with a developer? Similar to what's done at Legacy Farms, I think. We also gotta add uses not currently allowed in this, in this zone. Age-restricted townhomes, multifamily of all ages, apartments, and perhaps some commercial uses. Dimensional requirements, this is a big one that we'd really like to get input from the planning board on is really how dense is too dense in that area? Even though it's twelve acres, it is surrounded by single-family homes, so we have to be cognizant of that fact. And I think the planning board members are probably tuned into into that more than anyone. So I think your input on, on density would be really important. Also on building heights. The RFI seemed to zone in on four stories as kind of an optimal building size. And would also like your opinion on the nineteen twenty-eight center school building. There is, there is some interest in having a private developer take that over and put in some senior housing in there, some commercial development in there. Or should it remain a town asset? Because of its historical nature and being right on the town common. Do we want our administrative offices in that building? So those are the kind of things that we really need more input on before we can really develop an RFI to go out to developers.
Dan, quick clarification, please?
Sure.
You mentioned the neighborhood mixed-use on South Street. Did you mean Lumber Street?
I probably did, yeah.
Okay, no, just wanna be sure. Thanks.
Sorry, Dan, did you have any more to go through before?
No, I think, I think we can open it up to discussion now. It would be good.
Okay, and, and I, I just wanna provide a couple of quick comments from my perspective and then I don't be honest, I don't know the, to me, this is something that I think all of us are probably gonna have to noodle on a little bit and process.
Oh, yeah, we're not, we're not looking for input tonight. We just wanted to kind of bring the subject up. And if you could do it at a work session sometime and let us know, that would be great.
Yeah, and, and I, I think, I think to be honest, it probably makes sense to schedule a, a future meeting at some point as well, that we can do some of our work and process and then come back and revisit.
And, and af- after we meet with, with your board and Historic Commission and I think the Affordable Housing Trust. We do plan on having a public forum at some point to seek public input as well, so we have, we have time to put our thoughts together.
Yeah. So, so I guess the, and I'm, I I applaud your effort. I know this is a really tough project and a very important project for us, just given the location on the common. I, I guess the only, the, and I know you had some specific questions about density and building height, but I, I think one, one sort of caution I would have is with the word optimal. An optimal for who? And I hear you say that, you know, four, four stories is optimal. And that multifamilies are optimal. But optimal for a developer is not necessarily optimal for the town. And I, I know you guys realize that. I just wanna be really, really careful because optimal for a developer is most likely profit. And profit might be a function of anticipated use. But our, our goal here isn't to make a developer more money. It's, it's, I, I think it's to, to build something that is an asset for the town, that the, the town benefits from to the maximum extent possible. And I, I know you guys are aware of that. I just
Yeah, no, that's, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. You're right, the, the four stories is what developers are saying. But we have to do what's right for the town when we develop this RFI.
Yeah. And the only other thing that I, I'd say just off, off the top too is that I, I wanna be, you know, as we think about dimensional requirements. Unfortunately, not, maybe given density is not always the same. I just, this is just me speaking as, as an individual, but you can have really nice dense, higher density housing. You can have really, really poorly done dense housing. Even though it might be the same number of, of units. You know, per acre. So I, I just, I, I would, and I think that's something for all of us to think about is how we, you know, if, if we do go down the pathway of, of, you know, having some overlays or districts that allow for denser housing that, that we find ways to make it very attractive and desirable density as opposed to less desirable density. The last point I would make is that I just, as I, I think about things that the planning board has identified as very important to us. You know, we talk a lot about about pedestrian connectivity and how we can improve walkability and runability and, and, and you know, rideability in town via bicycles. We have, we talked a lot about affordable housing. We know that's a major, major issue across the Commonwealth right now and Hockington as well. So those are things that, that, you know, hopefully we might be able to solve for here. And sorry, just one last thing, and I, I don't know, I had seen something on, coincidentally, a, a center school property in Drakett, Massachusetts. That, that actually they were renovating an old school building and they were converting it into veterans' housing through a combination of, of grants and then local development. So just something else to think about. There are probably likely a lot of options out there, but in some cases there might be some grant money or, or other foundations that might be able to help fund the cost of this. So I'm gonna stop there, but I see Ronnie has his hand raised. So Ronnie, do you wanna go ahead and ask a question or share your comments?
Yeah, I think. So I, I think, thank you first for the presentation. I noticed that there were the two distinct models. They both had a very similar feel, but they were clearly different. I was curious, beyond housing, has anything else been considered like some community centers, recreation, athletics, outdoor theaters, anything like tennis court, pickleball, swimming pool? Anything like that has been as a possible alternative to more housing? Again, I'm not, I'm not an expert in this.
And that, that's what we've got to tailor for. Like, I just put this one up from one developer. It's, it's very focused on housing. And at the detriment to what the town needs. We're, we're kind of relegated to this building here. So this, this one, this one probably would not get built out because it doesn't meet our needs. It's really, it's really tailored to meet the developers' needs. So we've got to we've got to include, you know, the administrative offices. We've got to include Parks and Rec. We've got to make sure all our needs are met first, and then the excess land can be used for development. So we're not, we're not sure if this if this model is actually gonna be any benefit to the town at the end of the day. But we feel that it's we should at least look into it for the taxpayers before we just go to them and ask for twenty million dollars.
Oh, absolutely. No, no, I was thinking, you know, the, the extra land. Again, I, I look at it always as, as three buckets, as more homes, more recreational stuff for the existing residents, and then commercial. And so the, the proposals that you, or the models that were put forth were heavy on the residential. I'm just curious. Are the other two options even feasible? In other words, more commercially, I think you mentioned one, you mentioned that like a coffee shop as well as more, you know, like, no, no, just stuff for the community as a whole. Whether it's just like, no, I, I don't say the open space because there is a park right next door, but you know, like I'm saying, like more athletics, pickleball, tennis courts, swimming pools, stuff like that.
Yeah, those, those are the kind of needs that Parks and Rec brought up that they'd like to see out there.
And, and Dan, if I may, if you just go back a couple of slides to the original the original drawing that you showed, yes, this one here. So, so Ronnie, that, that was what they had initially started with, which included some of those types of facilities, but the, you know, I mean, fairly big price tag, and there's probably not a lot of money to be made by a developer that's gonna build, you know, recreational facilities for the, for the town.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I, but again, like, this is just the, the one. I'm just, you know, again, if we're at this point, spitballing, I'm just curious, like, again, that's just the way I group things into three buckets. I was just curious about that, but thank you very much.
All right, Dave?
So kind of going same direction that Ron was going. In, in my mind, the, the best thing I feel is for a community center for the kids. And I, I'm glad you have it on this page here because I would ask the building committee to to have a, an alternative to this that's not quite as expensive. Like, do you need that extra new building? Like, it seems like the goal is to save the original center school building up front, and that makes sense, and, and to demolish the rest of it. But do we need more building? Could we get away with just one building to lower the cost and make that feasible and keep the property under the town's ownership? That would be my suggestion. There's some kind of modified version of this that cuts down the cost. Maybe geared towards a community center.
Yeah, that's, that's probably in one of our five or six options that we looked at. But I think that the Select Board was they felt that they're gonna do this, they ought to go in and, and try to meet as many of the needs that were identified by the town departments. As possible. Um, rather than kind of be short sighted and and not do it all at once, just, just because of price, so. I don't know, there's, there's two sides to that argument, I'm not sure which is the best way to go, but. On this, on this particular slide, this is one that. You know, this is the town going it alone and just doing, using the property for their own needs. And and not having development. And leaving any excess space for future needs that may develop uh for the next generation. You know, that's, that's another consideration that we have to, have to think about.
For you, Mr. Chair, just to follow on.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, so thanks, Dan, um, I I would say that's a little hypocritical that they're saying that let's do it right, but yet we don't have the money for it, right? So, um, that's just something to consider, and just, just to make the point again, that, you know, I think our youth is the biggest asset of this town. And everything that we showed, that's um, you know, cooperating with a private, that has nothing geared towards the, the youth. Um, it's just, just my personal opinion, you know, we, we, we see a lot of issues with kids these days, um, everybody reads about it, I don't describe it, but. Uh, I think one of the biggest goals is um to give our kids a place. A place to where they can have fun and make friends and um, you know, live, live life the right, the right way and not the wrong way.
Yeah, I think we, we've gotta get that community center into the program somehow. Um. You know, it was, it was an identified need, I think, everybody, I haven't seen, heard anybody say anything against it. Um, one, one of the things that's kind of kicking around Town Hall right now is. You know, a community center up on this property. But take the Parks and Rec. Um. The, the fields, the gymnasium, they take up a lot of space. What if we were to take that and consolidate that over on Fruit Street? And leave the center school property for, you know, other needs that are less land intensive. So that, that idea is kicking around as well, but uh I don't think it's gained too much traction yet. But what, what do you, what do you, what are your thoughts on that, having, having fields right in the downtown area? Is that the best use for this property or? Or would it be better suited somewhere else?
But just to follow up, Mr. Chair, um, in my own personal opinion, I I think field is not the appropriate use there, I, I agree. Um, where land is more readily available, um, yeah, like I said, I wasn't too concerned about the fields in this setup, but I do like maybe a. You know, can that center school building be um updated so that it's indoor recreation for the kids? You know, whether it's ping pong tables, pool tables, you know, whatever it is.
Yeah, that, that's a, that nineteen twenty eight building, that's a tough building. We've had, we, we hired abacus architects, uh and they went through that. In pretty good detail, it's, it's just a tough building to create usable rooms in. So we, we can make some office space there, you know, might set up for some, some apartments or condos, but. To make it into a, a real community center might be tough because of the, of the different levels, the staircases, the. The walls, the columns, uh, it's, it's just a tough building to renovate.
So, Dan, I, I wanna talk a little bit more about that nineteen twenty eight building, um, but let's just. Shove that for a second, because I, both Fran and and Elise have their hand raised, but I, I do wanna make sure to to go back to that, because I, I just wanna kinda. Get some sense from the planning board as to where people's thoughts are on that nineteen twenty eight building, but before we do, let's go to, to Fran first, and then we'll go to Elise.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, Dan, uh, nice to see you again, appreciate you and the team doing the work on this, so a couple, a couple of things coming to mind. One, I think we're in a unique position here that this is a town, current like town property. We have a little bit of, honestly, control is the right word, but we can provide some pretty strong guidance, and I would say in the RFP, and. You keep use the word RFI, our, the terms RFI and RFP, I think you've done the RFI.
We have done the RFI, yeah.
Yeah, and one of my last questions, I won't answer that, but just give me a sense in terms of what your ti- vision of the timeline is going forward. But I would say in the, in the RFP, I would be incredibly spes- um, prescriptive. To developers and whoever this goes out to in terms of, what are the key things that the town wants to keep? Whether it's a, a, you know, indoor, you know, basketball or indoor type facility. I- indoor space for administrative, the town, I've heard it going back and forth. Um, and and I think once you define what is mission critical and what needs to stay, then you allow the developers to kind of, you know, develop something around that. Because if it's just gonna be open, developers are gonna be like option three, it's all gonna be um housing and apartments and, you know, optimal and whatever the terms they wanna use. They're gonna do it to make as most, most money as they can in terms of the space, and they're gonna do the math on it. I think for the town, uh, again, I would just go back to, what do we think is absolute mission critical, it needs to be saved, it needs to be put in place there that is really gonna kind of. Function uh and and really keep the spirit of of what I generally, I think people would like the um, that building to be preserved as. Uh, and i- its legacy going forward for the next hundred years. Right, so that, that's my first point again, you know, and I do.
That descriptive term is, is very good, that's kind of what we're honing in, and we've gotta, we've gotta really do a detailed RFP. To meet the town's needs and what we really wanna see, and then the, the developers' needs are more secondary to ours.
A hundred percent, I mean, when, when we, when I get RFPs from, from, you know, uh, business perspective. Um, I know exactly what my, you know, what are the criteria that I gotta work around in order to deliver something that's gonna give me ROI. Right, so that's just, just food for thought, then the last point here, and I'll turn it back over to Elise is, you know, what's your timeframe, your vision of the timeline on this? Is, are we talking the next, you know, the RFP over the next quarter, and then, you know, how is that gonna matriculate over the next twelve months, twelve to eighteen months?
Yeah, we'd like to try to get the RFP developed over the next quarter. Get it out in the fall to developers. Uh, and would really like to try to get to next spring town meeting with some definitive answers. For town meeting to make some decisions on what to do here.
Thank you, appreciate it again, appreciate all the work for you and the team.
Great uh points and questions, thanks, Fran, um, Elise.
Um, thank you, I just wanted to um throw in my two cents as a mom of young kids. Um, I'm also on the board of the Moms Group in town, and there aren't really any. Municipal buildings or spaces where we can hold events or meetings. Um, and so it would be really nice to have this and just, it doesn't have to be specific, not necessarily courts or anything, maybe just. Rooms or a, a big open space where, you know, volunteer groups and towns could use it for their meetings, or if they wanted to throw. Um, a fundraiser or something, we have the space to offer them, and also, um, coming from Florida. I always am reminded that we have very long winters, and so it would be nice to have an indoor space. Maybe like a youth or recreation center for people to be able to utilize in the winter, because we can't. Use all the trails and all the nice outdoor open space we have all winter long, all the time.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, but that's, those comments echo what we were hearing from the Youth Commission as well. On that community center, I think that's. And, and if we have a community center, that would, I think, bring more townwide support to this project. You know, no one wants to spend money just on office space for administrative staff, so if we can bring a. A more community-wide base to this project, it would help us.
So, so one thing I think is worth talking about is that nineteen twenty eight building, and and Dan already alluded to some of the. Problems with it, um, I know from conversations I've had, there are massive expenses. Associated with rehabbing it in some way. Um, you know, I'd also just point out too that uh this is such a, a wonderful parcel of property with that frontage on the common. Um, and one thing, one idea I'll just throw out there is, you know, is it, would it be worth considering? Um, actually demolishing that building, and please don't cringe at me quite yet. But build something that is in the same character that actually offers substantially more functionality. And as an example, you look at the, the, the blue building that had the fire in it on uh on Main Street, and, you know, that situation, despite the fact that that was a. Historic structure, um, the applicant came back and and said, you know, if we just can build something uh from the ground up, we can actually substantially improve. Energy efficiency, we can improve usability, functionality, um, and make something much, much better. And so I, I'm curious how the planning board feels, um, you know, as to how important it is to. You know, save the, the, the existing shell of that building, or, you know. Would, would folks be open to something being built in its place that, again, had similar characteristics? But uh was built in a, in a, you know, in a, in a moderate capacity that would improve functionality? Ronnie, I think your hand is raised.
I was just gonna say I'd support it, Carrie.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to say I also support it, it's basically round pu- a round peg square hole type scenario, what we're trying to do is like. Make something fit into what we already have versus do what's best for the town, so I, I support if necessary to completely demolish. Start from.
Same, that, that's actually good to hear, it's. That sounds similar to what we are hearing from our architect. Um, it certainly goes against what I think I'm gonna hear at Conservation next week or uh at Historic next week, but. Uh, our architect is saying that, you know, these, these nineteen twenties buildings like this, they're kind of a dime a dozen around New England. There's nothing really special about them. And they do make it more difficult to build a building that's gonna serve the next generation.
Right. And they're very costly.
Right, yeah, we uh, we were gonna replace the windows uh. You know, a couple of years ago, using CPC funding. And the estimates for just replacing the front windows on that building, because they're so large, was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just on the windows. And tha- that's why we get up to a twenty million dollar price tag on, on this, uh, on this project, because, because of things like that. But there, there is a thought that we could demolish that, build a very functional building. Uh, that could pay homage to the past, uh, and and be iconic for the next generation on, on the town common. But I think the, the Historic Commission is gonna weigh in on that, they're gonna have a, an important role on, on that decision.
Dave?
Yeah, just a real quick comment, I was gonna say along those lines and trying to sell this to the Historic Commission, could you, could we? Build a brand new building where the exterior looks exactly the same? And then make it more efficient, make the structure inside so it can support what the town needs. And then if, if desired, build something off the back, but to keep that exact same image facing the, the town common would be. Um, ideal in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we could, we could match that same facade, I don't think that's difficult to do. Um, the other, the other issue with reusing the building is ADA compliance. Uh, we struggled with this at the library, trying to get um ADA compliance on that one. Uh, we're gonna have the same issues here, where, whereas a new building, we could make it very accessible to everyone.
Yeah, I was, I was saying, with a new building, right, that's.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, I, I've got a couple of quick recap comments, but before I do any other comments or questions from board members.
Uh, through the chair?
Yes, go ahead, Jane.
Um, I just have two, a, a couple of comments, one is, it appears as though, from what I'm hearing tonight, you're looking at. Even though there are two large, two parcels. Uh, and it sounds like the town may have a feeling about wanting to hold on to both. Have you thought about suggesting that the town hold on to the center school front property? And yet sell off the back property? Um. That might make it easier to get RFSS and um maybe earn some money to offset the cost of the front part. The second thought that I had is that I know that the grade really falls down on that back parcel. And could it be that when you do your RFIs that you include um maybe underground parking in some of the areas? Or um offsetting it somehow so that you could take advantage of building into the slope somehow? To take advantage of um creating a more dense area. And the last point I would like to make, I know there's been some concern about, especially senior housing, and how. That could be fit into this whole overall project, if you did housing in the back. Could um the developers include um space for elevators so that they can actually? Use, the seniors could utilize all of the stories, all of the floors, and make it available for. Um, folks who have handicap issues. Thank you, and thank you for all of your work, Dan, and the committees.
Well, thanks, Jane, and your, your first comment was kind of in line with what direction we got from the select board. Um, they don't wanna give up all of the land to a developer, they wanna make sure that. Uh, the town maint- maintains control of, of their uses. Um, which was, kind of fits into the front parcel, and then relegate the back parcel to developers. Um, but I think that, that would limit the value of the property, because that, as you mentioned, that back property is pretty tough.
Uh huh.
Uh, and then it does back up into, that's Prestwick Lane right there, um, I'm sure. They don't wanna be looking at too much development right in their backyard either, so we gotta be aware of that.
Um, I'll just throw in this, uh, the trails are looking to work trails throughout that whole property too, so. It would be nice if um all of the trails groups could be involved in this as the plan, as the process continues.
Yeah, we've been in touch with the Trails Group and they, they made us aware of those plans, so. Um, that would be part of any RFI that we've got to maintain some sort of trail network through this property.
Uh, the Upper Charles Trail is planning to go through there as well, besides the UCTC.
Okay.
So, Dan, here's kind of a, a quick snapshot of what I'm hearing from the group. Um, and and I think number one, from a planning board perspective, we wanna make sure that whatever's done here, that there is. Some meaningful benefit to the town. And so the idea of, you know, compromising or or changing our density standards or height standards for something that is, is purely residential. I, I think is, is gonna be a challenge for us, but if there's some hybrid option that actually incorporates some benefit for the town. Particularly if it's around, um, you know, indoor facilities for youth, um, meeting space or 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 other things like that, I, I think that's something that. That kinda helps bring some, some balance um to it. Um, the second thing that I heard, and I thought this is a really good point from Fran, it sounds like yours is already thinking about it, but, you know, when we do that RFP, we. As a town, we need to be really prescriptive as to. As to what it is that, that we do want out of it, and I, I know that's what you're wrestling with now. Uh, as to what those things are, everybody's got a lot of ideas, um, and uh I'm not sure there's a, there's a perfect way to, to formulate that. But I think you at least heard from this group that, uh, again, uh, indoor facilities uh in some capacity for, for. You know, for, for kids, I think is particularly important to us. Um, and then I, I think the third thing that you heard from us tonight is that, at least as a planning board. Um, not our say, but um, you know, I, I think we're, we're very open to. To new buildings that still maintain some, uh, that, that still maintain the character of that nineteen twenty eight building on the front. So, um, you know, and and again, I think that, that's, sure, you've heard that other places as well, but I, I think that's, that's something that is a, as a, as a board, I think that that's something that. We're reasonably comfortable with.
Well, those are all great thoughts, I, I appreciate today everyone's input tonight. So our, our next step is, as I said, we're meeting with. So our, our next step is, as I said, we're meeting with, uh, historic next week. We're going to have some sort of a public forum as well. Uh, we're going to take all that input and do our best to incorporate it into an RFP. And then distribute that back to you folks. So you can have some more input on it, uh, and help tailor to what's best for the town.
Hey, hey, Dan, can I ask one more question of the planning board group here? And I'm, I'm just thinking through this in my head, but at the end of the day, as we think about either, you know, kind of youth recreation space, as we think about, you know, affordable housing, senior housing, those kinds of things, the frontage on the common is probably not that important for those uses. Whereas if we had some type of, you know, restaurant, commercial use, something like that, in that situation, that frontage is very important, um, for, for that use. And I'm, I'm just curious what people would think about, you know, potentially using that frontage, uh, on Ash Street for something that, 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 that would really benefit from it. Um, and then using the back part of the parcel for some combination of, of, of other uses. And it just kind of gets into that whole idea of, of a, a mixed use overlay. Maybe there's, you know, I mean, I mean, maybe there's a way to, to build into this, um, some senior housing, um, some youth services facilities of some kind and some commercial on that frontage. Um, and I'm just curious if, if, uh, if folks have at least an initial reaction to that. Fran?
Big advocate for it, Mr. Chairman. I think that's a great idea. Uh, one of the things with the growth study committee talked about that I was in favor, I was looking at the entire area around the common looks for potential, uh, different zoning opportunities to support, let's say, small restaurants, uh, where you could really kind of benefit from a, a, a higher density type of uh, development. Senior housing could benefit because things would be in walking distance for those members. Uh, I, I think it creates a, a, a look and feel that, I think many groups and constituents would benefit from such, uh, such a, an idea on the frontage for the, uh, the proposed law.
Thanks, Fran. Roddy?
Um, I would also support that kind of initiative. I do have one question, um, if I may. Um, was any discussion as if you were to sell off the, um, plot on the, uh, right? Uh, what would the financial gain be on that roughly? Any ideas?
Uh, that's what we're trying to figure out with the RFP on that number. Uh, we've seen some, we, we, uh, hired Leggett McCall to give us some, some development numbers on here. And depending on the density, we're looking at somewhere in the three to seven million dollar benefit to the town. Uh, if we could develop, say, something like that.
So that three to seven would be the entire property or just the property on the right?
It, it was, it's the entire property. We didn't look at just developing that. Although I imagine that's going to be toward the, the three, three million dollar range if we, if we limited developer to this. But if we're talking about, just what you're talking about earlier about putting some sort of commercial development up here, um, that may be more, that may be higher value.
Well, it's like, you know, I, I think these ideas are great. It's just a quick question. If we were to just, um, able to sell off the right parcel, what, would there be additional access beyond what is shown as going through on the screen right now?
So, Dan, I could probably, maybe I can take a stab at that. I mean, right now that back parcel doesn't have any street frontage. Um, and you've also got to get a easement across the utility, but, um, based on the plans here, there's, the, the likely access would be through the front parcel.
Right. Would be off of, or through that front parcel.
The rash and stuff like that.
In, in addition to working with ever source, uh, we also go to work with police and fire to make sure that, uh, whatever we build that back there is accessible for them during an emergency.
Yeah, great point. Exactly. Okay, thank you. Mary?
Um, I was just going to express support for the concept of some commercial use on the frontage piece. Um, so essentially that would be where the current building is now. Um, but, uh, but using it separately. I also, I'm, I'm in favor and I think it, you know, it still needs to go before the town or larger groups of the public, but I'm in favor of keeping the right-hand parcel as open space and trails. And I think we would be, I, I understand the, the, the attempt to offset costs. But I think given the choice that, um, the town would say, keep it as open space.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. Dave?
Um, I have two points, but one just to add on to what Mary's saying. I totally agree with her because um, we're looking at ways to keep open space. So it's always hard to sell open space to make money, uh, just to make money. But, um, what I really want to talk about, Gary was looking for some input to the commercial aspect and I want to respond to that as well. So Gary, I'm a little bit hesitant. Only be, and, and Fran, um, you as well made a point about small restaurants around the, the town common. I, I like the idea that the town common is residential all around it and our focused areas are the downtown area and down by four ninety-five. It seems like that's where we want to really build up the area for commercial and restaurants and such retail. Um, I, I, I would be hesitant to go into this almost type neighborhood type area around the common and, uh, put retail there. It'd be like sprawl, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Um, I think, Dan, anything else that you want to hit on? I know we're, we're a little past our time, but I.
Yeah, I, I think you've, you've given us a lot more than I expected. So I really appreciate it. You've got a lot to think about and, and enough to move forward.
Okay. Well, great. Um, I, I, I will say that, um, I'm speaking on behalf of the planning board, but this is the kind of stuff that we'd, uh, like to talk about and, um, you know, the, the more we can engage early on in the process, uh, the better. So um, you know, a, as there's more opportunities to engage, please, um, keep us in the loop and, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, like I said, I, I think we all agree that this is a tremendous opportunity for the town and, and we want to make sure that, um, you know, we, we can get something done with that property that, that has a, a, a net, very, very positive net benefit for the town. So appreciate all your work and I know how much time it takes to go through all the different boards and needed to aggregate all this and come forward with some type of recommendation. So, um, thank you to you and uh, the other members of the, of the committee.
Okay, we'll be, we'll be in touch in the future. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Dan.
Good night.
Um, all right. So the, the next item on our agenda is the continued public hearing for, uh, Chamberlain Street Scenic Road. And as a resident of Chamberlain Street, I'm going to refuse myself and hand it over to Mary.
Thank you. Pressing, pressing the wrong buttons here. Okay, there we go. Thank you, Gary. Um, okay, so, um, we all had a chance to, um, to go on a sidewalk to Chamberlain um, last weekend, the weekend before last, I think it was. So, and that was very helpful and, um, and I, I really appreciate the time that Chris and Matt spent with us that day. Um, and, um, um, and Mr. Westerling. Um, so thank you very much. Um, I think it was, it was really helpful in terms of seeing the, um, the need, um, behind the removal of trees. Um, the trees that were either diseased or, or hazardous in other ways, um, as well as those be, um, really true, uh, very, very close to um, some additional poles that are being put in or the replacement poles that are being put in. So we need to discuss today. Um, I think to look at it as, as three essential groups of topics. One is the, the removal of trees. The second, and this is only in the right of way, so only in, only the trees that are under our purview as planning board is in the right of way. So removal of trees, the removal of limbs over five inches in diameter. And, um, and then the, um, compensation for removal of trees and where those uh, compensatory trees would be placed. And those are the main, main topics, you know, I'm kind of grouping them together as, uh, just to organize the, the discussion. So, um, uh, I'll just, you know, just, I think that I, Matt could walk through the two-page diagram he's provided with the updated um, tree removal and tree pruning, um, recommendations. I think Matt and Chris have done an excellent job in terms of identifying what they believe are the trees that need to be removed, but that is not necessarily our job as planning board. Our job as planning board is to weigh the, um, the considerations of both the scenic road and the, um, the ever source recommendations in terms of removal of certain items. So keeping that in mind. Okay, so Matt, if you could, um, just review briefly the two-page diagram, I assume John's pulling it up. Um, the two-page diagram that's revision June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, um, provided um, the right-of-way items between number twenty-seven and forty-six Chamberlain.
Through the chair, I can pull it up or Matt, if you want to pull it up and you can point to stuff, that's fine too.
Yeah, I'm, uh, pulling it up right now. Um, I guess before I go into that, um, I don't think everyone on the planning board was at the, uh, the sidewalk.
No, that's correct.
So yeah, just very briefly, um, at the last meeting, there's a lot of conversation about why the, the utility construction needs to happen in the first place. Um, and basically, you know, forgive me, I'm a, I studied forestry and engineering, but, um, the reason is that it's, it's against ever source policy, modern ever source policy to supply developments like this, um, through one line. Uh, we want to have it looped in with two lines from two different sides. Um, so that way if something nasty happens on one end, uh, you can still feed as much of the development as possible from the other. Um, it really, um, really increases electrical reliability. Um, not only for the development, um, but if something were to happen on Hayden Row, um, cutting off power supply to Chamberlain, it would actually, um, the power, the lines from Wayland on the other side of the development would actually supply Chamberlain with power. So it would actually increase reliability for everybody.
Thank you, Matt. Um, yeah, that's, and just to reiterate that, it means that, that power is coming in from both directions. From Wayland and from Chamberlain, um, to the development and to the rest of the streets. Okay? So there's redundancy.
All right, let me just share my screen. All righty, so we're starting at the, uh, sort of the midpoint of the road. Um, so this, uh, this is, uh, green for this map. Green means it's a, a proposed pruning. Um, and the thing with a lot of these prunings is that, um, oh, first of all, our, our spec is tends, is, uh, ten feet to the sides and fifteen feet above, um. Uh, and that usually, that, that accounts for a typical growth rates for the Northeast, for northeastern tree species, um, for around four years, uh, which is how, how often we tend to come by with our regular pruning to keep the trees away. Um, so it's not as much about getting the exact physical space for the wires to go through, but getting a little bit of a buffer so that, um, several years from now, um, there is no contact. Um, and the other thing is proper agricultural procedure. Um, basically you want to cut things to a ladder, either a lateral, that is a sort of like a sideways horizontal, um, branch or larger leader or go about all the way back to the stem. And the thing with a lot of these prunings that are on the other side of the road that, as the power lines is that all of the lateral sort of side growth, because they're following the light is going um, in the same direction as the main leader. Um, so even cutting back to a lot of these lateral, uh, branches, you're running into the same problem where they're trying to go to the power lines anyway, instead of to the side. Um, so and that's sort of the case with these two, um, where, um, what's actually over the power lines isn't um, a huge amount of, of leader of limb. Um, but it is difficult to find a good place to cut back to, um, that both satisfies our space requirement, um, while also, um, being good, um, tree pruning, um, to allow the tree to survive. Um, so that's what both of these are. These are two, two oak leaders that are over five inches. Down over here, this is where a lot of the work, proposed work is, um, so on the screen, blue is a removal, proposed removal. Um, and green is a, um, green is a, uh, a, a leader. So this oak leader, um, over here, uh, sort of the same story is what's, um, what's going on with the, uh, the other two further up the street, sort of growing over the, growing over the road, um, and over the power lines. Um, and I apologize for the poor notation of this, of these notes. These are my private notes that I've accidentally opened, um, onto the, uh, instead of the official, um, the official copy I submitted. Um, so what's going on here? Um, this is a, a black cherry. Um, that is too close, uh, basically too close to the power lines. It's not making contact. Um, but it's within a few feet, um, of the power lines and there is some canopy hanging overhead. Um, so the worry here is that as the tree naturally sheds, uh, branches, um, as it gets older, um, they could potentially fall on the power lines. Uh, wind could knock the power lines around to potentially um, have it, uh, hit the stem of the tree, although with this tree, but possibly not super likely because of the, uh, the support given by the nearby pole. Um, so the main concern would be, uh, branches dropping onto the power lines. Um, this here is a, uh, this here is a red maple, um, where the, the canopy is actually in the, um, like physically occupying the, uh, the space where the power lines would have to go through. Um, so the problem here is a, a potential fire hazard as, um, friction wears away the power line, touches the metal underneath and actually gets, um, electric current running, uh, running through. Uh, that is, uh, that's a big problem for us. Um, uh, this one is a, uh, this one's a hickory, um, where it's this, it's the, uh, the same issue where a lot of the canopy is going to be physically where the, um, where the, uh, the new lines are going to be. And I'm a little worried about, um, one of the, um, the branch structures in it, I think is a, a, a weak branch structure, although uh, John disagreed, um, and, um, this was not classified as a hazard removal. Um, this red maple over here, uh, same story as a lot of these maples. Uh, it's just the canopy is physically occupying where the, um, where the space is going to be. Or where the other lines are going to be. Um, these two maples over here, they're set further back. These two were included, I think, along with hickory, um, for being outside the right of way, but a lot of their canopy that is over five inches, um, over the right of way. Um, and it's, they're just outside, um, of where the, um, the wetland delineation is, um, but they are fairly close. Um, and, uh, their entire structure is growing, um, pretty arched over the power lines. There's no way to, to cut it back without just leaving, um, a standing trunk, which actually, uh, ConCon did suggest that we do that, leaving that, uh, standing wood, um, because standing wood is great for insects and what's good for insects is good for birds and small mammals. Um, with the caveat that we would have to cut it back far enough that if it were to fall over, it wouldn't fall over into the road. Um, this oak over here, um, is the same story as a lot of these. It's just physically occupying the space um, where the lines are going to be. And then here is another red maple that is also physically occupying the space um, with another two maples behind, um, that's sort of uh, sloped backwards a little bit, but a lot of their smaller growth that is not over five inches is growing into the power lines, um, or would be growing into the new power lines. Um, so we'd like to get those, uh, removed as well. Um, so here are two more, um, two more oak prunings, um, from a, uh, from a, what we call co-dominant, uh, tree. What that means is a tree of multiple stems. Um, so both of these are just two. Um, so both of these are just two, uh, leaders, I think one from, one from two different stems, not from the same stem, uh, growing over the power line, growing over, um, pretty close to where the power lines are going to be. Um, and then this one over here is another group of two, although this one is from the same tree, and this is actually the, um, the, uh, the pruning that I added myself, uh, when I was out in the field, I, um, was looking at, looking at, I just got a new look at, um, where the power lines would be from a, from an angle I didn't see earlier, and I think that, um, it has a lot of the same issues that these other ones have, which is that they're going to be fairly close. If not, uh, physically occupying, um, where the, uh, the new power lines are going to be. Um, so that brings us to a new total, uh, both of my one addition for myself and then with the addition of trees that have a part of their body over five inches, over the right-of-way to, uh, eight removals and seven prunings.
Okay, thank you. Um, could you go back to the page with the tree removals and we'll take that on first? Um, okay. So all the removals are on this page, all the removals that we have any purview of. Um, so, uh, Fran, if you could limit your comments to removals at this point, um, I'll let you go.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Matt, thank you for the overview. I think one thing I heard early is that since there's, uh, redundancy coming in both from Waverly, uh, as well as from Chamberlain, does that give a little bit more flexibility as to what actually needs to be removed versus not? Because you've got some redundancy. And then second thing on the removal and it, sorry, Madam Chair, this will bleed over into the pruning as well. If your window is four years and given the heightened sensitivity of folks, you know, uh, that live on Chamberlain currently, you know, the pruning's done kind of in a four-year cycle. Is there an opportunity or possibility to kind of prune that on a two-year cycle? Because I've seen in the past, uh, you know, I'm not throwing you under the bus, but you know, ever-source and the different providers will go in there and they will just hack down, um, trees and, and cut back limbs on a front of five, four, five, six-year cycle. And then the, and then they just, and they go away to the next project, I get it, but the impact of is significant to those folks that live and drive by. So just going back, is there an opportunity to kind of look at that, uh, instead of a four-year cycle, two-year cycle? And then given that there's additional redundancy, can, uh, you know, some of these trees not, not necessarily be removed to the fullest extent, maybe trimmed back and assessed in two years' time?
Matt, do you have any comments on that?
I do. So, um, yeah, so theoretically, uh, many outages caused on this street or any trees on the lines on this street, um, depending on, on exactly what happens, um, would necessarily affect the development because they would be fed from Wayland. But they would also be outages that would affect, uh, folks on Chamberlain and, and would, um, also affect our outage numbers, which get, uh, regulated by the state. Um, so we are obligated to reduce as, all the outages as much as we can. As to your other question, um, I mean, four to five years is an industry standard, um, across, uh, across a lot of the country. I don't, like, i- it's, it's, we have, um, as I'm just thinking of how to formulate it. I mean, it basically comes down to, we have a lot of mile of circuit, um, so reducing, um, circuit, uh, reducing our timeframe between circuits um, is a, a very large increase in the amount of manpower that we would need to, um, to trim everything.
So, I just, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Chairman. So he's saying no, that, 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 that's not an option to kind of lower the cycle.
That's what it sounds like. It sounds like we cannot ask for a specific thing for this particular street in, in our town to be done on a different schedule than others. But, um, Chris, um, if you have additional, um, points related to this question, please, um, take yourself off me and reply. Thanks.
Uh, yeah, um, you know, Matthew was referencing the reliability standpoint of, uh, maintaining a certain clearance zone around the wires, but I just want to stress that, you know, that's only one aspect of why we do this. You know, one of the main aspects is for, from a public safety standpoint. Um, understood that if we were to, we are, the plan is to feed radially, or I'm sorry, uh, on a loop feed uh, down Wayland as well, but if we still have, uh, trees in close proximity to the wires on Chamberlain, that's still going to leave us in a, uh, a, a tenuous situation as far as public safety goes.
Can you elaborate on that in terms of the OSHA rules and what specifically about public safety you're concerned about?
Sure. Um, so the electric wires that are currently on Chamberlain uh, are carrying a voltage in a maximum voltage of about thirteen and a half thousand volts. Um, kind of on a day-to-day, uh, voltage is probably going to be, you know, a little under eight thousand volts, like, um, you know, seventy-five hundred volts, something like that. You know, when you get trees in close contact to wires with that voltage, you know, you have the potential for things to be electrified, um, especially since these trees are in the ground, you know, electricity is going to go, uh, try to attempt to make ground, uh, as, as much as it can. Um, and so what, uh, Mary, it was just, um, excuse me, was this referencing as far as OSHA goes? Uh, OSHA regulations state that if you are not a qualified, um, a tree worker, qualified to work around electric wires, you are not allowed to get within ten feet of that, uh, electrified conductor. Um, if you are, excuse me again, if you are, um, certified to work around those wires, you can get within two and a half feet. So our workers are certified to work around those wires so they can get within footage, but, um, you know, the, kind of the, the normal tree company, the, and, and the layman, you know, the, the weekend warrior, you know, they're not supposed to get within ten feet of those wires. And so that's something else that we take into consideration. We, um, came up with our clearance specification.
Okay. So, so your concerns, um, and you know, what, how you, your criteria, I should say, for evaluating these things have to do with, um, tree limbs that break off and fall onto the wires. So that's one thing. And then the other piece is tru-, uh, tree limbs that perhaps stay attached to the tree, but come in contact with the wires. Um, and therefore represent like an electrical bridge to the, you know, to grounding and so on. Is that essentially?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you. Uh, Ron?
Uh, so, uh, firstly, thank you for, um, both, man, Chris, for clarity as well as explanation here. Um, I understand the highest priorities, obviously, human safety, uh, the fires, all that stuff. But I do want to follow up to some fans quick, friends' quest statement question, just a one little bit more. If hypothetically, there was a two-year pruning cycle, would that change the number of trees proposed to be removed to a smaller number from the eight? Or would it still be eight?
Well, a lot, a lot of these trees are on, um, because, uh, because they are physically going to be where the, um, the new wires are going to be. Theoretically, if you were to take that standpoint, you could knock, uh, one or two off, I suppose, but, um, I mean, this is, this pro- this, this project is, uh, timeframe-wise, isn't being proposed on the same year that the circuit um, gets pruned, I don't think. So it is, it is actually already off of where, um, our four-year, uh, cycle for the circuit would be. Uh, so we wouldn't actually, we would actually already be coming back, um, fewer than four years from now. The four-year cycle.
Have you taken that into account, Matt, for the, you know, the pruning that you proposed, that it's going to be sooner than four years? Or have you kind of done it on the four-year, you know?
Oh, I mean, I, I would say that, um, I've already, this, this plan is a very much reduced plan from, um, what I was initially working with. Um, so even with this plan, um, we're not getting as much clearances as, as I would like, uh, personally.
Okay.
So, if I could throw in, uh, just, uh, clarify.
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
You know, the, the, the leaders that we're proposing to remove and the entire trees we're proposing to remove, uh, that's typically not what we're going to be pruning on our normal maintenance cycle. You know, what we're pruning on the maintenance cycle is going to be new growth that's coming into that zone, that ten by ten by fifteen clearance window that we're trying to maintain. Um, the leaders that we're asking to remove and the trees that we're asking to remove are currently, uh, uh, will be occupying that space when the new construction is completed.
Um, okay, thank you. Ron? You had followed?
Yeah, basically, it's, it's, the, the one thing is this, this road is considered scenic. And if there's a possibility of maintaining, even as, as Matt said, two trees, by augmenting the pruning cycle, I think it's something to really consider. It's not just a normal street down, you know, that isn't considered scenic. So that is the, my concern here that uh, although I, one hundred percent Matt, Matthew's safety considerations, and I, I know we never question that in the slightest. This is a scenic route, and if there is a way to salvage one or two, it is something that we need to, in my opinion, put some serious thought into. That's all.
I would, I would echo that.
So, um, for a lot of these, uh, prunings to, um, uh, to sort of reduce the amount of, um, to reduce the amount of, of wood being taken out, um, you, we would be basically chopping a lot of these things in half. Um, and sort of leaving half of a, half of a limb over the road. Which brings in the question, like, brings in the question of it's going to be, um, harder for the tree to recover, um, versus pruning it back to the trunk. So, um, now, I, I mean, from my perspective, I would, I'd like, just aesthetically speaking, um, I would actually, I would personally prefer, um, seeing things taken back, uh, all the way. Instead of sort of just leaving half of a, half of a limb there. Of course, though, I guess that could be personal taste.
No, and I, I respect that. It's just the, the, obviously, again, again, I don't want to, uh, for any contention here. It's you, on your end, you're going, okay, this is the, the, the very black and white because that's what your job is, and I have no questioning that. It's just the, uh, not being a resident in that area. If there was a way to maintain the environment of, for these residents who moved there prior to this extension being improved through the, through the, uh, past, uh, uh, planning board, it is our duty to ensure as best as we can. So that's why, although I'm not questioning that, what you were proposing is the, the black and white by the book answer. I'm asking, is there a reasonable middle that does not go to the extreme while still, A, maintaining the safety, uh, 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 the, uh, integrity of the electrical wires, absolutely everything. That's what I just want to know. I, I think I don't want to go full and, and all we have is a, is a neighborhood where the residents are not happy because we are representatives of those residents.
So, I just wanted to say something here. Um, and this is specifically regarding the removal of trees um, during the sidewalk. Um, in my opinion, all of the tr- the marked trees on this diagram, except for the final one farthest to the right, the cherry, too close, it says. Okay, that was the only one that it was even feasible to retain. All of the other ones were very clearly, in my opinion, visibly going to be right in the line of the wires to be put in. Um, the exception being the two that are not within the right-of-way. That's, that was just the leaning issue. The cherry, um, that is the, on the far right, um, that was the only one. It seemed to be leaning away from where the wires are, but as you can see from the proximity to the new pole, it, um, it has a, a, a potential to grow up into the area that needs to be kept clear. So, um, I do not feel that, uh, a large number of these um, are possible to save from a removal standpoint. Keeping aside the pruning of the large limbs, that's going to be a separate topic. Um, but I would like any, any other comments regarding the removal from planning board members. Okay. And regarding that cherry, I don't know, Matt, if you could speak to me a little bit more about your notes regarding that cherry and, and what the justification is.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so it's, it's basically, i- it's, in my opinion, it's too close to the wires. Um, it's well within the ten feet. Um, there was some debate over the exact footage, um, on the sidewalk, um, but it, there was still, um, it, it leaning away slightly, yes, but there was still canopy coming back, um, over the wires, um. Um, and yeah, I mean, I mean, even earlier today, I was actually out doing a, an outage investigation, um, which is sort of a similar, um, situation where, you know, cherry, like, we'll say five feet away from the wires, had a little bit of canopy over, um, through its natural self-pruning process, dropped a, a limb onto the other three-phase, smaller than any of these prunings um, that we're talking about. Um, we're talking like a branch that's like an inch maybe in diameter, um, fell onto the power lines, it caused a short circuit and cotton fire, um, burning the, uh, burning itself and then the other cross arm. So, I mean, that's sort of an extreme example, um, but I mean, that's just something I saw earlier today. Um, but yeah, I mean, I would agree in general that, um, of all of these trees, I, this, this is probably the one that, um, is less of a priority.
So, Madam Chair, does that mean, Matt, that that tree, we can save that tree? And not take it down?
Uh, I mean, all, all these are your decision. Um, but, um, yeah, if, if you were to take one off, this is one I would be, uh, the most happy with.
So, I, and I, I don't think it's, it's fair to necessarily ask Matt to say it would be okay. Uh, because I think it's his job to say, um, these things are my recommendation to remove. But, um, but yeah, you know, I appreciate you, you know, the, giving us more color around that one in terms of your notes. So, um, and it, it is really our decision as to whether or not we save that one tree. Um, but does anyone else have any reason to, um, discuss and reconsider any of the other seven? Based on what we saw in the field and what we are hearing today? Okay. I'm hearing nothing, so, so let's put those seven to rest and we can consider, um, uh, as we, as we move forward, um, that cherry as, as a possible saving. Um, okay, now, regarding the limbs, um, these are all, if, if I'm not mistaken, all three pages, all of these limbs or perhaps all but one of them are coming from the opposite side of the street. These are, these are, um, yep, so they're all on the opposite side of the street. Um, as I recall, these are, you know, th- this is what is providing the canopy over the street. And, um, obviously, much of the canopy, um, is quite high because these are quite old trees. Um, but some of them do represent large limbs that would be hanging over um, the, the plane of where the wires, um, will be installed. Um, however, um, removing them all the way to the stem as, you know, as, as it makes the most sense to do, you know, aesthetically and, and, you know, for the health of the tree, almost entirely removes the canopy above the street in Chamberlain Street. So, that's what we're looking at, um, in terms of these, um, the, the specific tru-, uh, limb removal, the ones over five inches. So what we need to weigh is the issue of um, the, um, the likelihood, or I shouldn't say likelihood, but the, the frequency with which li- limbs will fall. And some of those limbs will hit the wires and some of those limbs will, um, take out the wires and potentially cause power outages and potentially cause, um, uh, you know, some, you, you know, the electrical connection and that kind of public safety. and that kind of public safety issue. Um, versus the removal of the canopy from this street that makes it a, a nice tree-lined street that's covered with, with shade. So.
Yeah, I think, um, for, for myself, the, um, the priority of the limbs, more or less, actually, sort of decreases linearly as we go from the, um, the end, what used to be the end of Chamberlain, um, to the beginning of Chamberlain. Um, so down here at 45, um, these two on the left, um, these two are going to be physically occupying the space of where the new wires are going to be. And I was talking earlier about how it's good to prune back to what we call lateral branches. These two really don't have any at all. So some of the ones up ahead that we'll talk about, um, do, um, have potential places we could cut back to these ones. Um, there's really not much, um, between where they start on the stem, um, and where the bulk of their leaves are, and a lot of their wood is, is directly where the, um, directly where the power lines are. Uh, so these two are on the same oak tree, um, both around, both, um, yeah, both around six inches.
Okay. Did you want to go through the, uh, the other ones? Yeah?
Yeah, so, uh, these two, like I said, um, so to explain my notation, notation, codon is a, uh, industry shorthand for codominant. It means it's a tree that, um, uh, has multiple stems. Um, so there are two stems on this oak tree, um, each with one leader, um, that is just at the cusp of five inches. I think it could even be four and a half, but, you know, I haven't been up there in a bucket truck to measure, so I, um, didn't want to, um, um, I didn't want a chance accidentally getting anything, uh, over five inches. Um, but yeah, so these ones, um, sort of the same story. Um, there's not really much to cut back to, um, until you actually get to the stem.
But the height, the height of those, um, those branches is above the wires, where the wires will be?
Uh, the, they end up where the wires are going to be, uh, not, not above them.
Not above them, okay. So, you're saying that of the, of the proposed prunings, these four branches represented on this page are among the most important because they are right in the space the wires will be?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. M- m- Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a technical question, if I may, for the, for the applicant. What is the, tactically speaking, Matt? Um, what's the process for the, the members of your team to cut those? Do they look at your handwritten notes and identify a, that particular branch that's five inches because they're up in the bucket truck? Uh, because I assume it's not marked with spray paint or anything, but they, they're looking at your notes and to determine that's the branch I need to take off?
Yeah, so, um, basically what I do is I send them a table, um, from Excel where I break it down, um, by pole span. So, for example, I would probably say this one's just at pole four, uh, forty-three over twenty-two. Um, opposite, uh, from the power lines to lowest, um, branches on the, or two lowest leaders on the, uh, the oak tree. Um, I mean, then the tree crews would also be under very, very, uh, strict instructions to not touch anything, um, that is over five inches, um, that is not explicitly on my list.
Okay.
So, um, what Matt was saying is accurate, whereas, uh, you know, under normal circumstances, we are not there monitoring and directing exactly what the tree crews, we give them pretty, um, uh, you know, explicit, uh, instructions in written form, but, um, in this particular situation, I think that it would make a lot of sense just to have either Matt or I there to be directing the tree crews to make sure they're making the absolute right cuts.
Yes, we can do that as well.
That'd be awesome. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Ron?
Uh, thank you. Um, just, uh, want to, want to clarify something. You mentioned, so these four branches would be in the direct line of where the new wire would be, correct?
Yes.
And if I recall from the previous, uh, presentation, you mentioned that the, uh, wire needed to be raised because of the voltage and more amperage or whatever, I'm not sure the terminology. Um, is that correct as well?
Yeah, so when I was saying they're where the wires are, I'm talking about where the new wires are going to be.
Exactly. Is there, and I know, I know we're raising them because of this additional power going through. Is there any issue of raising them higher than the current brand, that, than where they are, where you're proposing it, so that the branches do not rest on top?
Um, so the, the, the fa- the, the lines are going to be put on the top of the poles or as tall as they can, the line crews can get them to begin with. Um, and even if that were not the case, um, it's still a problem to have, uh, tree growth that close to the lines, even if it's underneath, because then it's not necessarily a problem of a, a limb breaking and falling on the wires. It's a problem of tree growth, um, growing upwards and then actually coming into contact, um, into the wires, not breaking on it, but still coming into contact. And once you get friction with wind and rubbing the, um, the, uh, the wires, the wire, uh, weatherproofing away, um, then you start getting into, um, into fire territory as it starts to, uh, short circuit and, and arc onto the, onto the tree growth.
Thank you very much.
Okay, could you move to the next segment of the street?
Yes.
Okay, so again, we're looking at the green ones here, so it's only one on here.
Yes.
Um, oak leader too close. Um, can you, um, can you identify from your notes? Um, is this leader above the wires, where the wires will be?
So this one, if, this one, if I recall correctly, should be, um, right above where the wires are going to be. Um, but I mean, like, right above, like, really close, uh, to where the wires are going to be.
And is this one, um, a possibility to, um, to cut to just a lateral? So it's a much shorter cut and leaving some canopy over the street?
Um, I'll be honest, I don't remember, um, what the lateral situation was on this one too much, um, but I, I think that, um, I, I think that would probably be best to cut back to the stem on this one. I don't, I don't recall any obvious, anything obvious about there being a, um, an adequate branch, uh, to cut back to. So when you're cutting back to a lateral, you want to, the minimum size that you're cutting back to is, um, a leader that is at least one-third the diameter of what you're cutting off. Um, so it's no good to just cut back to a twig or a small branch. It has to be something of actually moderate size compared to, uh, what you're taking.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions on this one? And so to the next page.
Wrong way. So these, so, yeah, these two are ones, um, yeah, I apologize for my poor notation. These were, these are for, for myself. Uh, grammar is not, uh, very strong, but, um, uh, so these two are ones where, uh, it's really the, um, the last few feet of the, uh, the limb, that's the issue here. Um, but because this part of the street, on the side of the street, has a much, um, um, there's less of a tree line, so, um, each tree has a very full canopy. And what that means is that each individual branch is trying to shoot straight out. Um, so all of the, um, lateral branches and limbs that would be of appropriate size to cut back to, um, sort of jut out to the side a little bit and then go immediately, um, towards the lines as they follow the light. Um, so cutting back to a lot of these laterals, you end up in a situation where you're just kind of, um, kicking the can down the road, and we're just going to end up back here pruning these again, um, repetitively for the rest of this tree's life.
But you're saying that these were not above the wires, but they were at the level of the wires?
These ones are going to be, uh, above the wires, above, above the new wires.
Okay, and, um, that's, that's true for both of the,
Yes.
Um, the, the notations here, the both, both of the trees, individual trees, okay?
Yeah, but actually, this one, um, this one, there is a lateral that we could, could back to and not the stem of the tree.
But it's also above the wire.
I'm sorry, I must have misheard you. So the lateral in the notes, um, uh, there is something that we could come back to.
Okay.
Uh, but it would still require taking several feet off of, off of the limb, but less than going back to the main stem of the tree.
Gotcha. Okay. So, um, any other comments?
Yes, Madam, Madam Chair, on that, you know, based on the comments that Matt made, is that up to then our group, this group to make the recommendation, uh, or, or make the determination, I guess, based on the recommendation in terms of where to take it back to? If, if what I heard is if you can kind of leave some of that canopy that's still there, um, and take it back to meet his requirements, is that a, is that an option?
Yes, it is. It is our determination whether or not any of these limbs are cut. We can say no. Um, we can say no. It is a risk, you know, which, uh, which, you know, which has been discussed, you know, of what the risks are, but none of these limbs have to be cut. Um, and it is our determination whether or not they are cut. Dave?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would like to suggest that we don't approve pruning of any of the trees on the other side, unless it's directly in the way of the wires, um, where they're running. Because can't we, um, can't we have them, after the wires are installed, can we revisit the opposite side of the road?
Um, although we can, um, it's, you know, when you get into the OSHA requirements, you know, that certain level of qualifications, you can only work within 10 feet of these wires versus, you know, you have to get a, a lot higher level person type of thing to be closer to the wires. So if anything ends up really close to the wires, then they have to get specialized people in, not just one of the tree companies. Um, so, so yes, but is the answer. Um, so, um, uh, but, you know, good point, um, and, um, and in terms of, um, other comments from the planning board? So my, my recommendation is much like yours, Dave. Um, so in terms of the tree, uh, limb, um, pruning that we're talking about, I do not think that these last two should be cut at all, the five-inch ones, because they are over the canopy, over the wires. Their canopy is over the wires, not in the line of the wires. And I don't think any should be cut, um, th- that are within our purview, so the over five inches that are, uh, that are over and not within the wires. So that's, you know, my recommendation. And, um, I am open on the issue and, you know, open to, to, um, the rest of the planning board's thoughts on the saving of the cherry tree.
Madam Chair, can we just be clear how many that would be?
Yes, please. So if we can go, um, one, two, these two, can we go one back one page?
Oh, yep, one second.
Mary? While he's looking for that, could I just ask one question?
Yes, go ahead, please.
As far as timing, when would this work take place? Before the wires, the new wires are installed or after?
It's before, that's the idea.
It would be, it would be done before. And, um, this is a point of clarity, um, for these two, um, you know, if the planning board rejects, uh, pruning these, um, we, ever source would still have to prune, um, enough to make space for the wires for anything that is under five inches.
Yes, that's understanding, uh, understandable. So, okay, so this, this one on this page, oak leader too close.
Three so far.
And, um, and that, I believe, was above the canopy, above the wires. The canopy was above the wires. I'm sorry, I keep saying it wrong.
Through the chair.
Yes.
We just, I, I need to, if we're going to put these in a condition, um, I just want to make sure I've got the right one. So on the last one, just go back.
Okay, can you go back to the other page?
So I've got these as two, uh, including two oak leaders.
In front of twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, uh, Chamberlain.
And what is the notation, uh, what is the correct notation for the pole numbers?
Uh, so this would be poles forty-three over fourteen to forty-three over sixteen.
Did you get that, John?
Yeah, yeah, I got it right now.
Okay.
Hope this is, I hope this is in your job description, John. This is, this is very complicated. Poles, poles and houses and trees.
And then this one, um, is one oak leader in front of thirty-five Chamberlain, across the street from forty-three slash eighteen pole. All right.
One second. That's pole.
Forty-three slash eighteen or over eighteen, or redo it.
And that's across from pole forty-three eighteen?
Yes.
Yeah, well, they're all across from because they're on the other side of the street.
Right.
And it's thirty-five Chamberlain. And then the last two, I mean, the first, yeah, this first page, so it's two, um, these four, my understanding is that those, uh, branches are going straight into where the wires are going.
Yes.
And we have no opportunity to save these.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're leaving those alone. Okay, uh, so going back to page two. Go ahead, Dave, you were going to say?
I was going to say, I think it's the three, the first three that we identified, right, that John wrote down.
Yep, so it's three, three less, three fewer. Um, do people have opinions regarding this one cherry tree, which is the farthest right blue notation on the, I keep using my cursor, but you can't see it, so it's, uh, it's just for me.
I, I would support you, Madam Chair, keeping that one.
Okay.
I would concur.
You will concur? Okay. Anyone else? Any other thoughts on that? Okay.
Sounds like a good idea.
All right.
I agree.
Okay, so, so what we understand here is that we are going to condition, um, the approval based on, um, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven trees identified, uh, for removal, and those being in front of thirty-seven, thirty-nine, and kind of part of thirty-five Chamberlain. With one of the proposed removal trees not being removed.
I think it's eight then, isn't it? One of the eight?
It was, it was eight, yes, it was eight originally, so seven being approved to remove. Okay. And then of the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven limbs over five inches in diameter, um, and all of, all of which are on, from trees across the street from the poles, we are approving four of them for removal and not approving the other three for removal.
Correct.
Okay, does everyone concur? Before we make the motion, I just want to make sure we have the details of the conditions, right?
And so you, Madam Chair, question a process before we make the motion, should we get input from the neighbors?
Yes, we should, we should get, um, we, we do still need to talk about the compensa- compensation.
Correct.
Trees and, um, so, so we can't, uh, quite finalize the whole thing yet. Um, so, okay.
Or that the compensation be part of the final motion versus?
Yeah, I agree. So, but what I want to, um, verify with John and, um, and possibly EverSource is, um, is who is responsible for the compensation? Is it the developer or is it EverSource?
EverSource is the applicant, so they would be responsible if they need to talk to the developer to get compensation behind the scenes. To recoup what they are required to pay.
That's okay. So that's up to them, okay.
Yeah, I mean, Toll Brothers is not applying for this. This is a EverSource.
EverSource application.
We can't compel Toll Brothers to do anything that they're not applying for.
Understood. Okay, so, um, in terms of compensation, um, there's been uh, um, some, some, uh, written comments from, um, a butters. And, um, discussion in general, I think, um, last time, let, at our last meeting as well. Um, to have, um, compensatory trees placed for, again, it's only for the ones in the public way, the ones that are, we have purview over, we're talking about. That compensatory trees be placed on the extension um, to Chamberlain. Or Wayland. Um, so in the same neighborhood, any that cannot be, for various reasons. Any that cannot be replaced in the same location that, you know, removals were done. Um, that it be done in the same neighborhood, so it be done on the extension to Cambridge, to Chamberlain. Yes, Fran?
Madam Chair, would that require Toll Brothers approval on that, or because it's in the right-of-way area, it would not necessitate additional approvals?
I'm gonna ask John for his opinion on that.
If it's in the right-of-way, Toll Brothers doesn't need to approve anything, it's town land.
Okay, well, I guess then, I just want to clarify that then, let's be my, my question.
Okay, and I assume, you know, we're talking deciduous shade trees, you know, of the, of similar species to those, um, present currently. So, any comments on that aspect? So we will be talking, yeah, go ahead.
Would, would we be so prescriptive as to identify where those trees will be placed, or would that be up to the applicant, in this case, EverSource, to determine the, uh, the location?
Your recommendation would be?
Yeah, I mean, my, my thought would be, it probably lies eventually with us, but would be, I'd, I'd be open to hearing thoughts and comments in terms of where, where, where the best places would be for that.
Yeah, I, um, I personally, uh, believe that, um, that EverSource could come up with some appropriate places for the seven trees that need to be replaced. Um, and, and can discuss that with the Toll Brothers in terms of the compensation, you know, the cost of the trees and so on. Um, they're also going to be discussing this with, for any removal done for individual homeowners. So, um, but, uh, but if we, if we feel like we want to have final approval of the placement of the trees, we can put that in to the condition.
My suggestion, my suggestion would be that we do that. I don't want to be overly prescriptive here, but I think, you know, if we you, we've managed the process this far.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that, um, you know, a, a final okay, or, or at least getting our sign off on where they want to put it. Uh, feels, uh, feels, that would complete the package.
Okay.
But that's just my thought, one, one, one person's.
Any other thoughts on that? No, okay. Um, I would like to open this up to public comment. Could, um, anyone who would like to comment on any aspects of our discussion thus far? Um, please raise your hand or speak up. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Not seeing any hands, not seeing any. All right. Okay. Um, then John, um, can you, i- i- if you have the, um, conditions that you can read off that we've just formulated, that would be great.
Do you like to, me to read the other two as well?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, so the first one is the applicant shall provide photographs of the proposed area of alteration prior to the commencement of construction and after work has been completed. These photo, photographs shall be submitted to the principal planner for review and approval. Number two is the applicant slash developer shall provide the principal planner with a project point of contact and contact information prior to the issuance of a building permit. We should seem to, prior to the issuance, uh, we'll just take out prior to, so they just need to do that. So I'll read, the applicant developer shall provide the principal planner with a project point of contact and contact information. This point of contact information shall be kept current through the correspondence to the principal planner until work is considered complete. Um, and I haven't really wordsmithed this, but the general idea of the next one is number three. Um, the following trees and limbs shall not be cut, uh, oh, limbs over five inches shall not be cut. Including two leader, two oak leaders in front of twenty-nine Chamberlain across from polls forty-three over fifteen to forty-three over sixteen. One oak leader in front of, uh, thirty-five Chamberlain across from pole thirty, forty-three over eighteen. And one cherry immediately to the east of pole forty-three over eighteen.
The final one is a removal that is, is not. So the, the other ones were limbs, so they can all be in that same list. But the final one that you mentioned was not a limb to be removed, so it shouldn't be in the same list, it should be.
The way I'll format it is just, the following shall not be cut or removed, and then sub, uh, sub-bullet. The following limbs over five inches and then list those, what is it, three? And then, and the, the sub-bullet tabbed to the left, uh, in the one cherry tree. So it'll all, it'll be under the same number three condition, but different sub-bullets.
Understood. And could you also mention in that, um, the, the final number that are allowed? So, you know, there, there was a certain number proposed for removals and for limb removes. And, um, say the final number allowed in this decision is, you know, seven removal, tree removals and I think it was one, two, three, four, four of the limb removals. Okay?
Uh, yeah, so, okay, so then one more condition will say this permit allows for the removal of seven trees and four limbs. Um, I think given that, we should also have a condition that says, um, within, uh, fifteen days of the issuance of this permit, the applicant shall submit a revised plan showing the trees for, uh, trees agreed upon to be removed and limbs.
And that's just, that's not for us to necessarily see and approve, but it's to you, right?
Just for the record, yeah.
Um.
So, sorry, through the chair, Matthew, would, uh, seven days after the issuance be okay? Do you need more time? To just get a revised plan?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's not too, um, difficult to play around with the map or the, uh, the plan.
And how, I mean, how quickly are you gonna do this work after it's approved?
Um, my week's pretty full at the moment, but I could get in, I could get onto it Monday or Tuesday next week.
So if we say the applicant shall provide a revised plan showing the removals and, uh, removals of trees and limbs approved by the planning board, seven days following the appro, the issuance of the permit.
It should be fine.
Yeah.
I'm just giving John a moment here. So, two other conditions. One is that a, um, an arborist from EverSource um, be present to supervise the tree removal and trimming. When the work is done. And the last.
While the work is being done.
While work, while work is being done. During. Um, and the final condition is compensation. Seven compensatory trees will be replaced.
Are we requiring, are we requiring them to plant the trees?
Yes.
Right. And do we want them to be of like species?
Of like species, yeah. Appropriate for that area or whatever, you know? That kind of language.
Madam Chair, not to interrupt, um, Walter Brooks, the independent, can I just ask, so how many conditions total are there gonna be?
Sorry, Walter, can I just finish this condition then?
Yeah, John, sorry.
All right, so I said, I have, the applicant shall install seven trees of similar species to those trees removed. Do we have a location?
Um, along, um, along Chamberlain and Wayland. At appropriate, you know, uh, I don't know, I'm not as good at you as wordsmithing at this, but it's basically um, at, um, to be, to be approved by planning board. Proposal to be approved by planning board, um, but at locations suggested by.
So, so. No, we did accept Chamberlain and Wayland, didn't we? At town meeting. I was gonna say, if Chamberlain hasn't been accepted by town meeting it, then it's technically not town property, but I believe it has been accepted. Am I missing?
Yeah, yes, I believe so. Matt, did you have a suggestion in terms of the wording of that?
I just, I'm just, um, wondering, would these have to be within the actual road layout, or would be planting in the private property side be acceptable, just because there's a lot more, um, open space for big trees like that to do better? Not necess, uh, without all of them being in the road layout?
Well, the private property ones, um, um, you're obviously doing some compensatory, um, ones for private property. So these don't, these don't affect that, but of the seven, I would say that within, you know, within the right-of-way on Chamberlain or Wayland. Um, but if there is an appropriate nearby, um, private property that can, you know, that, that can be, you know, one can be planted in, that would be appropriate as well. So.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about like within the back, someone's backyard, but like, you know, just a few feet back where eventually a shade would become, you know?
Yes, yes, with, with permission from, yeah, the, the property owner.
Ma- ma- Madam Chair, on that, would, would it make sense, you mentioned about both Chamberlain and Wayland. But given the fact that these trees are being removed off of Chamberlain, do we want to try to keep them on the Chamberlain side of things?
That's the preference, that's the preference, but I don't want to exclude it because it's all part of the same neighborhood.
Okay.
So that's why I'm giving that leeway.
That's fair.
All right, so, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead, John.
So, this is the, the, the condition that we're working on now. The applicant shall install seven trees of similar species to those trees removed along Chamberlain and Wayland. Don't choose this. All right. Okay, so, just put in some commas, the applicant shall install seven trees, comma, of similar species to those trees removed, comma, along Chamberlain and Wayland in locations to be approved by the planning board.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think that, does that, you know, Matt and Chris, does that give you guidelines enough, but some leeway? In terms of placement of the comp- compensatory trees?
Yeah, I, I think that's fine for us, you know, I think, you know, I don't know how, how in-depth we want to get, uh, right now as far as you know, what, what size trees we're gonna be putting in and stuff like that. Um, and I guess, um, what the gentleman was saying earlier about wanting to make sure the trees are actually going back in on Chamberlain. You know, if we are gonna be planting trees that are similar species is the ones that we're taking out. You know, they can't be species that are gonna be going directly underneath the wires because, uh, uh, what I remember mammals, those trees are taking out are, are red or, or, uh, red naples, right? You know, which is not a species that is, uh, good to put underneath the electric wire, so I think it would have to be kind of beyond where the cul-de-sac used to exist in the new neighborhood.
Yes, and that's, that's what we're talking about, where it's, where it's underground wires. Um, except, you know, perhaps in some cases, it can go on the private property, you know, a few feet back from wires. Um, so, with, with permission from the homeowner.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Um, do we want to take out of similar species to those trees removed and just replace it with native species?
Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
And then another question is if we're giving them permission to plant on private property. Um, I guess this condition doesn't specify within the right-of-way.
It doesn't.
Okay, so that's fine then.
Okay. Okay. So how many conditions do we have?
If I counted correctly, we have seven.
Okay. Any final comments on those conditions from planning board? Nope, okay. So I would like to entertain a motion to, hang on, I'm gonna get the wording right. A motion that, uh, the board finds the proposed work relative to the submitted scenic road permit application conforms to the, oh, that's findings. Um, we have to do the findings first, I'm sorry.
You don't have to do them first, you generally do them first.
Okay, okay, so let's start with the findings. So I would like to entertain a motion that the board finds that the proposed work relative to submitted scenic road permit application conforms to the provisions of chapter one sixty and that all applicable criteria and standards set forth in section one sixty dash six has, have been satisfied. Could someone make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have, uh, motion in a second and voting on the findings. Um, Dave?
Dave Paul approved.
Yeah. Fran?
Fran DeYoung, yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Elise?
Elise Mihailovka, yes.
And Mary Larson Marlowe is a yes. Now, the approval. Um, I would like to entertain a motion that the board approve the scenic road permit with the conditions as they were previously read allowed by John. And I think that's the extent of that, so. Someone make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And voting on the approval, um, Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Fran?
Fran DeYoung, yes.
Ron?
Ron Pfeifer, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Elise?
Elise Mihailovka, yes.
And Mary Larson Marlowe is a yes. The motion is approved. And do we need to close this, this perm, this hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. And voting on this, Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Fran?
Fran DeYoung, yes.
Ron?
Ron Pfeifer, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Elise?
Elise Mihailovka, yes.
And Mary Larson Marlowe is a yes. Thank you very much, Chris and Matt, for all of your hard work on this and your um, your patience with us as we worked through it. Um, I appreciate it very much.
The, just one last thing, um, we are probably gonna try and leverage, uh, the developer into planting the trees. Um, and, um, you know, the next appropriate time to put in new trees would be in the fall, so that's one I would expect the tree to go into the ground will be in the fall.
It's understandable. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Chair, just for clarification on that, Chris, um, Just for clarification on that, Chris, um, it is, since you are the applicant, ever source is the applicant, it is that ever source's responsibility, so. If you try and get the developer to do it and they say no, we really have no power.
What's that? That's, I, I kinda hold, we kinda hold the cards here.
I'm sure you do, I'm just saying, just wanna make it clear that you hold the permits, so you guys will fumble for that, if they say no, it's still on you, but I'm sure you have uh.
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to sell houses if they're not powered.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. Turning it back over to Gary.
Well done, Mary.
Yep, thank you, Mary. Appreciate your uh, approach there, and I think dividing into those three topics was super helpful, so nicely done. Um, the last thing on our agenda tonight is um, meeting minutes that Stephanie had sent out earlier. Um, any questions or corrections um, from the minutes from either May seventeenth or June sixth? All right, and if there are none, uh, again, excellent job, Stephanie, thank you. Um, I will then entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from May seventeenth and June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. All right, and assuming no further uh, comments, we'll take a vote. Mary, how do you vote?
Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Rob? Who's Rob? We lost him, we lost Rob. Uh, Fran?
Fran DeYoung, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Ron?
Ron Paper, yes.
And Elise?
Elise Mihailovka, yes.
And Gary Trenton is a yes as well. Uh, and on that note, um. We will be meeting again on July eighteenth, and I believe. That will be in person at H Cam Studios. So.
So through, through the chair, I cannot confirm H Cam Studios, I emailed them today, they are gonna. Uh, I'm gonna work with them to make sure, I think it's gonna be H Cam Studios, but just in case anybody's listening. Check the agenda, it may not be H Cam Studios.
All right. Thank you, John.
Um, I might be, I might be ten minutes late to that meeting after I realize it's not on Zoom and I have to drive.
All right, so on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mary Larson Marlowe.
That can, Fran DeYoung. And uh, I'm gonna assume no further discussion, Mary, how do you vote?
Um, Mary Larson Marlowe, yes.
Rob? Sorry, Rob's not here, Fran?
Fran DeYoung, yes.
Jane?
Jane Moran, yes.
Dave?
Dave Paul, yes.
Ron?
Ron Paper, yes.
Elise?
Elise Mihailovka, yes.
Gary Trenton is a yes, thank you all, um, have a great couple of weeks and uh, look forward to seeing you in person, so, take care.
Bye all.
Bye bye.